I am going to suspend standing orders so that members will speak directly into the microphone. If you can make sure, please, that you pull them forward. I'm told that, you know, it's not as clear at the back and over the road as in my case. No, I said, sorry, suspend standing orders and there's no need to stand. Sorry. Thank you. When, yeah, standing orders, no, suspending. Right, let's move on. Members, we now have agenda item six, questions from members of the council. There is, as before, a time limit, of course, of thirty minutes, but I would hope with just three questions, we can go from there. The first question is councillor Waller.
I have been correspondent. Oh, no! Sorry.
You are, you are with us, you are with us.
Sorry. I've been correspondent chief executive and to the point I wish to make, I am advised that I can make it at the beginning of item seven and therefore do not need to ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we therefore go to question number two from councillor Cross. No need to stand, councillor.
I'll try to read word by word, not get it wrong. Would the portfolio holder for planning and development wish to comment further upon the allocation to South Cisteven of six hundred and fifty houses to be developed at Quarry Farm at Acuston with regards the loss of such housing to our own forward plan? This number, that would be well over twenty-five per cent of the proposed development of St George's Barracks.
Yes, wasn't really.
Doesn't really follow, that doesn't, Mr Chairman, but I'm probably right to finish.
Can you skip to the questions?
I'll try to get them. Oh, yes, and then were councillors involved in the making of such a decision? Thank you.
Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Chair. Being the portfolio holder for planning, I will answer the question for you, councillor Cross. The National Planning Policy Framework sets out the requirement for local authorities to have a duty to cooperate with each other and with other prescribed bodies, mainly national bodies, on strategic matters that cross administrative boundaries. Strategic policymaking authorities should collaborate to identify the relevant strategic matters they need to address. I'm sure councillor Cross will remember, the twenty seventeen consultative draft document, which set out, in developing new local plans for both South Cisteven and Rutland, the two authorities have worked jointly to assess the need for and the suitability of land which spans the county border boundary to the north of Stamford. This work has concluded that some land within Rutland will be needed as part of a large and permanent extension to support the sustainable growth of the town of Stamford and to facilitate an appropriate road connection and necessary infrastructure improvements to support the amount of growth proposed. The land, the proportion of land within Rutland is known as Quarry Farm. The site will only be brought forward for development in conjunction with the land in South Cisteven as a comprehensive mixed-use scheme, which allows a new road connection to the west. This plan also stated that Quarry Farm capacity from the comprehensive Stamford North Development will contribute to South Cisteven's assessed housing requirement. That plan was approved by Cabinet and more importantly, was considered by the Growth, Resources and Scrutiny Committee in November twenty seventeen when councillor Cross was present. The focus consultation regarding St George's undertaken in twenty eighteen also set out the same principle, that the Quarry Farm capacity from the comprehensive Stamford North Development will contribute to South Cisteven's assessed housing needs. Again, this was approved by Cabinet.
Supplementary councillor Cross.
Obviously, I'm very embarrassed, Mr Chairman, but possibly at that meeting to which councillor Brown refers, the actual allocation of those houses to a neighbouring authority was probably not sort of mentioned in so many words.
Is there a supplementary?
Oh, the supplementary. Shall I answer number two or not?
No, it's your supplementary, then I'm seeking. Thank you.
Is it, is that the number two?
Sorry, I think it is, but you gave a question.
Yes, because I thought I've got two questions, so. Take my glass off. It's pointless, but I might as well say it. Should not that allocation have been included within our own forward plan if there were to be any uncertainty about Rutland's future housing stock? Obviously bearing in mind it is the size of one of our larger villages. Thank you. Those were added words, sorry.
Thank you councillor Cross. Councillor Brown.
Councillor Cross, the sites in the local plan have been fully assessed for suitability and deliverability on a robust basis to be enabled to be allocated. Sufficient sites have been identified in line with the spatial strategy to meet the requirement for identified housing needs and allowing for a buffer to address contingency, market choice and address considerations of affordability facing our residents.
Thank you. So therefore we move to the third question from councillor Ainsley. Councillor Ainsley.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. My question centers around the linkages between the HIP agreement and the local plan. Can a local plan still be found sound if agreement of the terms and conditions of the HIP agreement are significantly delayed beyond examination by the planning inspector?
Chairman, I believe this question has already been answered in the paper sent out last week. However, for the benefit of the wider audience here in Seine, I'm happy to summarise the position as follows. There is no requirement after completed negotiations or have approved the grant. Many authorities have included sites, some very significant sites, but much larger than St George's, within their local plan at the pre-submission regulation nineteen stage, where sites require that grant to be delivered for that authority to deliver the houses accordingly, when they've neither had the offer of a grant nor entered into discussions in terms of terms and conditions. And there are many examples of that, I'm sure councils are aware of them. In particular, the Milton District Council Local Plan was adopted in twenty eighteen and the relief road, the Milton Mobery Relief Road, was included within that. That required HIP money to deliver that particular road and the houses associated with it. Milton District Council did not receive the offer of that money until November twenty nineteen, on the same day that Rutland County Council received those theirs, and that's almost eighteen months later. Therefore, the plan had already been adopted with a project that required a HIP bid, but in fact, and the inspector accepted that and was adopted eighteen months earlier than the HIP bid was received, and they still also have not settled their terms and conditions with the homes again.
Councillor, do you have a supplementary?
I do indeed. What are the implications for the local plan and in particular St George's? Should there be a failure to reach agreement on the terms and conditions of that?
Councillor Brown.
Chairman, if we are unable to reach agreement with the MOD or for that matter, the council does not approve the terms and conditions that are presented to them, then St George's will no longer be viable in its current form. The MOD will then need to reconsider their position in respect of delivering a viable, deliverable project, given the pressure, sorry, given the pressure on the MOD to monetise the site. Members will recall the letter from a former secretary of state to defence, which has been circulated, and this makes us very clear. No doubt, in due course, the MOD will build houses, however, we may not have the ability to influence, design and layout etcetera in the same way that we can with the help and the support of the grant from HIP.
So, thank you councillor Brown. So we, sorry. I was really saying councillor Brown. Members, we will now move therefore to agenda item seven, and as I indicated at the outset, I was saying a few words, I will then ask councillor Brown to present his, the actual agenda item seven, which I've seconded, and then I will, before we start the debate, I will go to councillor Waller for your deferred statement. So, members, before I ask councillor Brown to present this paper, really a few words, you have a total of five minutes in which to make comments, statements or ask questions. Officers will log your time between questions, answers and statements as at the meeting last week. As stated earlier, if debate is in full flow a little before nine thirty, I will be pressing an extension of two by fifteen minute periods at this time to close at Teligold, should that length of time be required. In view of the depth and complexity of this item, councillor Brown has indicated his presentation will take up to ten minutes, which I have granted. Also, some questions may require help or support from officers, if of a complex nature, which again, I deem reasonable to help councillors' deliberations. To members of the public, I realise that this item is a major topic within this county and of interest and great concern, but I would ask your support to me in chairing by listening carefully so that members are not distracted as we proceed through the debate. So, agenda item seven, councillor Brown, it's report twenty-three, two thousand and twenty, it's pages, not that you will forget, three to nine six six, and the reports are before you, councillor Brown.
Chair, thank you. Before I begin, my remarks, I'd just like to confirm with you that I will aim to answer as many questions as I can, but I will be referring to officers to respond to issues on technical matters in the local plan, and I'm sure you appreciate that. I may also seek advice directly from our barrister, who is with us in attendance tonight, and I'm sure you appreciate that that is a reasonable position as well, so that you get the accurate information rather than just my opinion. Tonight, I would like to propose the recommendations from Cabinet, which is laid out in the report which you have in front of you. I don't intend to read that out, I think we'll take that as right share if you're happy, so I recommend I will propose that recommendation. This plan is not just about a hundred hectares of St George's or, for that matter, the allocations of sites around the county, but it is in fact a series of policies which planning applications will be considered against by our officers and our members at Planning Committee in the years to come. So I think it's important that we look not just at the site allocations, but as importantly at the policies. The purpose of the recommendation will be to approve the pre-submission plan and maps so that it can be published for a statutory six-week period, the pre-submission consultation. Once that consultation is complete, the appropriate responses from that consultation and the council's technical evidence will be submitted to, together with the plans of Secretary State for independent examination, unless of course, there are any unforeseen circumstances or significant issues which the council will need to consider. If they are significant, this may require a further round of consultation on the items to which are to be changed. The proposal also seeks approval, but the inspector requested to recommend any main modifications, a description you'll hear many times in the coming year. The main modifications were recommended to council, and those main modifications to consult, sorry, to be consulted upon before the final amended plan is presented to Cabinet and council for adoption. Local authorities are required by law to prepare a plan setting out planning policies for their area. Our current two-plan documents, which were published in twenty eleven and twenty fourteen, require review, especially as the core strategy was adopted prior to the first version of the NPPF being published. The NPPF, for those, is the National Planning Policy Framework. The National Planning Policy Framework states in paragraph twenty, the strategic policies should look ahead over a minimum of fifteen-year period, from adoption to anticipate and respond to long-term requirements and opportunities such as those arising from major improvements in infrastructure. That is fifteen years. Hence the reason that the plan runs till twenty thirty-six. Plan has already been through a series of consultations, including the Issues and Options Paper in twenty fifteen, the Consultation Draft in twenty seventeen, which scrutiny reviewed in twenty seventeen, November twenty seventeen, and a limited science consultation in twenty eighteen, alongside a specific consultation regarding the implications whether the potential of St George's be incorporated into the plan. There have been a lot of comments that we should not listen to, the comments of residents of parish councils. As a result of these, in fact, a lot of modifications have been made, have now taken place. In particular, as part of the consultation with the draft local plan, Clipsham Parish Meeting responded to draft local plan in twenty seventeen, and they said, there appears to be no mention of the impact of the closure of St George's Barracks to provide an opportunity to relieve development pressures on Ocon, Uppingon, the local service centres and the smaller service centres. The recommendation by Clipsham Parish Meeting was a project analysis of potential for St George's to take place, to take further development, possibly ultimately beyond this planning window for two to three thousand houses. Needs to be carried out in detail and consulted upon separately before the next consultation version of the draft local plan is issued for further consultation. Ladies and gentlemen, I would argue we have done that. It's also interesting to note that that was co-signed by Mr Cliff Bacon, the current CPR re-representative, just two years ago. It's interesting how we use change. Since August twenty eighteen, a series of extensive pieces of work have been undertaken by our own officers, and I thank councillor Powell for our recent kind remarks about the dedication, hard work of our officers involved in the local plan, which I would certainly support. This work was extended due to the very late submission of the Wofop site, which we were required to consider as a reasonable alternative under the Habitat regulations assessment. The result of that work is that the plan and the body of evidence, which was published late last year and the earlier this, earlier this month. I think the report to council lays out the issues very clearly, but I would like to draw your attention in paragraph four, this is the report, the alternative options, the recommendation to approve the plan and the alternative option not to approve. We have a binary choice, as any other option other than approving would result in the same situation as described in option two. In other words, any delay or not agreed to allow the plan to go forward to consultation stage would not be in the best interest of the whole county. If the plan does not go forward to consultation as laid out, the county will be left open to speculative unplanned development, potentially in the most unsuitable locations, and the risk of government or, and the risk of government interfering or intervening in the preparation and completion of the plan. The first duty of the inspector would consider if the plan has been prepared, recognising our duty to cooperate, not just with our adjoining local authorities, but other statutory consultees such as English Heritage and Natural England, which of course, we have already done, and you're aware of that. After satisfying themselves on this matter, the inspector will then move to consider four tests laid out in paragraph thirty-five of the NPPF. One, whether the plan has been proved positively, is justified in terms of evidence, can be delivered and is consistent with national policy and guidance. Our officers, our legal team, including our external barrister in QC, believe that the plan, and I believe the plan, meets those four tests. What I have to say is that no such thing as a perfect plan by its very nature. It's a compromise between the needs of those who need new homes, in our case, young families who want to retain living in Rutland, and we want to retain them, and the demand from developers and landlords to build new homes on their land and the national guidance. The plan is positive in that not only does it meet the local housing requirement, but more importantly, our strategic housing market assessment. It is justified in that it's appropriate strategy based on the extensive evidence provided, and that evidence has been considered by external experts. We have included the reasonable alternatives, including Wofops, which we have demonstrated as not viable or deliverable, based on the evidence presented. The evidence base overall demonstrates that the sites allocated can be delivered, will be viable, deliverable policies in the plan, and most important of all, providing homes for young families which they can afford and need. Finally, the proposals, and finally, the proposals are consistent with legal requirements as well as national policies and guidance, which they are. Careful consideration has been undertaken as to the extent local plan can contribute to the mitigation of and the adaptation to climate change. The plan covers key climate change objectives and a range of policies to meet that objective. I would draw colleagues' attention to the evolving master plan at St George's, where PV panels are standard, as are electric charging points. One of the discussions that we're having with Lord Matthew Taylor, who's assisting us with the design subgroup at St George's, is related to the use of ground source heat pumps, where the technology is evolving and moving forward. Again, I am sure that some members would wish us to go further, and there is one who does not. I certainly would like to go further, but we need to balance the drive to reduce carbon emissions etcetera, while we're ensuring that sites allocated will be deliverable and viable whilst maintaining affordable housing requirements and avoid the plan being found unsound by making too many demands on developers. A paper has been presented to councils on this matter separately. Finally, I'd remind councils, there is no need for the terms and conditions relating to the HIP grant for St George's to be agreed before the plan is presented to the inspector. As you're aware, the documents presented to you, there are many authorities who have plans at advanced stages or even adopted before they grant, before they had a grant offered, let alone the terms and conditions agreed. I would like to stress that plan is about policies, a whole range of policies, not just site allocations. I would therefore recommend this plan to council, remembering that if council votes against the approval, it will not be without its consequences. This is a good plan, it will be good for Rutland overall for next fifteen years, and especially the next couple of years, which we will keep under regular review. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor, so that's taken, it's been proposed by councillor Brown, I need a seconder, councillor Hemsley, thank you. So that means, yes, I'm, I'm, that means that we are now in full debate, but as indicated earlier, councillor Waller, you need to answer this question, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I can't see whether it's on the wall. At its meeting on the sixteenth of January, the Growth Infrastructure and Resources Scrutiny Committee resolved to request council to change references in the local plan from climate change to climate crisis. That was all I was asked to report to this council.
Thank you councillor Waller. So, members, we now move to debate on the Rutland local plan, as outlined, proposed and seconded. Councillor Waller.
Thank you very much. I would like to propose an amendment for the local plan, as I think there are more than two options. Do you wish me to read the amendment at this point?
Can we see it before we proceed, please councillor? If you would read out your amendment, please, because I guess you will be, let me see, need a second, thank you.
Thank you. Before I read it out, could I refer everybody, please, to the decision recommendations that are in your papers, because I'm making reference to just the council. My proposed amendment is to replace one in that list with, in order to ensure a land supply for the next six or more years, this local plan be approved for regulation nineteen consultation, subject to the following. A, the plan period, sorry, the plan is for the period twenty eighteen to twenty thirty. B, the proposed development at St George's Barracks is reduced to three hundred and fifty homes, which is the number which can be built without HIP funding. C, this council begins the review of this local plan as soon as practicable, following the decision of this council regarding HIP, and then amend two, in that list, to, to read, support the local plan as amended, dot, 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 rest of that number two, and then leave the rest as they are.
Thank you councillor, and that is your proposal. I need a seconder. I'll take my first councillor, seconded, thank you, and therefore, members, we go straight to the debate on this particular amendment. Yes, sorry, yes, you can now introduce it, this way, thank you.
Thank you. The reason I'm putting forward this amendment is that I do think there are more than two options. We've clearly heard a number of concerns. I've not been convinced that other authorities have put forward successful plans without HIP, because the ones I've checked, they've either thought about HIP after the plan's gone in and therefore the plan must be sound in the first place, or the proposed housing will come after the duration of the particular plan that is extended. I therefore, sorry, I therefore think there are risks, and so it's took, the purpose of the amendment is to reduce the risk to this council. The viability of the thousand houses at St George's Barracks is totally dependent on us accepting the HIP. If we don't accept the HIP, this plan is unsound, as we have consistently been told that both the delivery of the two thousand two hundred and thirty houses, a thousand in the lifetime of this plan, one thousand one hundred and thirty in the next plan, and HIP are necessary to make the St George's site viable for housing development. If it's not viable, we either have a shortfall of a thousand houses in this plan, or have a site, St George's, which is not, in NPPF speak, sustainable. Either way, we are exposing ourselves to unnecessary risk. We have also consistently been told that the current supply of gas, electricity, water and sewage capacity at the current site will sustain three hundred and fifty houses. If we leave the number in the plan, reduce the lifetime of the plan by six years, then we will have sufficient site allocations to meet our housing needs for the next ten years. Further, by beginning the review of the plan as soon as this is practical, after we have the terms of the HIP bid, we can be well on our way to refreshing this plan to twenty thirty-six and beyond, and not be in a position of rushing through decisions at the last minute. Thank you.
So, the, it is proposed, it is seconded, so therefore we go into full debate on this amendment. Members, councillor Brown.
I just want to clarify a case of officers, because I spent today reading the NPPF, I can't find the right page, but am I right in thinking that the plan needs to look at least fifteen years in advance, not less?
Would you, would you like, would it help if you, or you look at your background, so, okay. Sorry, was it, sorry, just a question. Did you want the?
No, I'm sorry.
Sorry, was it, sorry, just a question, did you want the, or are you going to, unhappy?
I will speak.
Yes, indeed.
I thought, I just, councillor, be...
We were saying, you may answer, okay, thank you.
I can sit, thank you, I'm really up. Chair, I note councillor Waller's amendment. I think I responded to this in my closing remarks, when I discussed the issue of, I'll just go back to them if you don't mind, MPPF paragraph twenty, which is very clear, policies should look ahead over a minimum of fifteen year period. And therefore, a plan that comes forward, and I will ask my colleagues just to make sure I'm saying the right thing, and they should know it otherwise, or should know, that a plan that comes forward with less than fifteen years in strategic policies, from adoption, from adoption, to anticipate and as long term returns, so it is yes, fifteen years is the minimum. Otherwise, if this amendment is voted through this evening, we would not have a plan. I think that's what I would say. It would be very unlikely it found sound at inspection. And in fact, I think our advice from our officers and legal would be that you should not put it forward, because it would be found unsound. Yes, I got a nod on that one, thank you. I have, I think the rest runs from that, I think such a fundamental element of that particular amendment, that it would leave the plan unsound, and I would ask councillors to know that in responding.
I just, councillor Beck, you did ask a question for the information, and you are content with the answer.
Yeah, that, that, I was goodbye, that, that.
That's perfect, thank you very much. So, it is, is this proposed and seconded? Do you want to...
I have a point of information.
Yes, indeed.
Just ask councillor Brown at the beginning, you just said it should, not it will be. It doesn't definitely say.
I think if I asked my colleagues behind me, they would be unable to find any plan that was less than fifteen years from adoption in terms of strategic policy. There's certainly not, or anyway, and certainly the inspector would question very seriously any plan that did not meet the fifteen year period. Should is a very strong word.
Chairman, it's not definite. It's not definite, thank you. Right, okay, I think we've asked those, answered those two particular items. Now we are in debate, members, who would like to ask any questions or statements or whatever. Councillor, obviously, thank you.
Thank you, chairman, yes, I think, I'll just hold on, sorry, yeah.
Yes, sorry, it's fully acceptable, sorry, councillor.
Eighteen, eighteen years. I'm a little bit, so, yeah, I would support the amendment in that it would give us breathing space. I take on board what councillor Brown has said, but B, the proposed development at St George's Barracks is reduced to three hundred and fifty homes, which is a number which can be built without hit funding, will I believe allow, if new building needed to go on after, then it could be, it could be done at a later stage, which is one of the reasons why I think councillor Waller suggested this. But critically, must get the local plan sorted this evening, I think everybody would agree with that. It would be, would not be good for this council to postpone again. A lot of people have received a lot of different information, we've read the plan through page one to page nine hundred, and whoever it is. We are all, I believe, of a single mind that we need to do what's best for the county, but we have got so much information to digest. And when, as I say, I have had scientists, but only an hour ago, as councillor Waller and I met before this meeting, just informally, and we discussed it, unlike the political group, which we won't go into, who've probably been discussing it for weeks how they're going to be voting, but that's another story. So, I suggest that, I know, I know you're not prepared on that, but I suggest that we give this due consideration, and not just throw it out. I'm waiting to hear what councillor Waller has to say in response to councillor Brown's assertion.
So, I have, councillor, councillor, would you?
I'm just slightly confused about the three hundred and fifty houses, if it is accepted with no investment in the infrastructure. Could you just outline to me what that would look like? I know this is your board, so, and I'm naive, so please, could you paint me a picture? Thank you.
Councillor.
The currently developed area at St George's Barracks clearly has water, sewage facilities and electricity, and as part of this process, we've been advised consistently that that is sufficient for three hundred and fifty houses. The problem that the M O G has is the cost of decontaminating the site, which is why they were wanting a higher number, but the higher number comes with having to bring more electricity to the site, increase the water, sorry, increase the water supply, and enhance the sewage facilities, all of which come at a cost that you wouldn't ordinarily have a site that you were developing, because you'd have, you know, an electricity power station nearby and so on, or this, this town has got to come from Stamford, and obviously there's quite a big cost to that. So, that's why we're going, the proposal is for the higher number. I'm simply saying, you don't actually need the hit bid for three hundred and fifty, it, the site itself is sound with that. It would be the site owner, i.e. the M O G, who may quibble, it's not something we, in assessing it, would say. And in any case, the three hundred and fifty is what they were planning, or in fact, it's slightly more than was being planned to deliver between now and twenty thirty anyway, and one assumes that if the hit bid comes through, then it's back to the original number in the next plan. Of course, if the hit bid doesn't come through, then we're in no worse position, because we, this site isn't going to be developed as it is currently described without a hit bid, and so we'd have to go back to drawing board, but at least this way, we wouldn't have a local plan that had homes in it or to use, councillor, and there's a conder, so that's what that means.
Councillor, I think you have a supplementary, but in your five papers, of course.
Yeah, yeah, I'm keeping it short, because it's quite simple. I get your picture of being able to sign three hundred and fifty from a utilities perspective, but not from an impact on the road, you haven't addressed that. But my, my other concern realistically is, how do you think hit bid, which is actually a government grant, would actually work if we hadn't got a plan that's approved that says we're actually going to do anything? So, I'm trying to understand how you think that would be a viable proposal for the government to agree to. Thank you.
We have applied for a hit bid, we have been offered it, the delay is that they haven't provided the conditions that this council has accepted. I'm not predetermining whether this council will or will not accept those conditions.
I think I saw, did I see councillor Brazil? So, I'm sorry, councillor Brown.
Can I just, for a point of clarification, Chair, on a number of points. First of all, the three hundred and fifty houses would not be viable in the current form. I think councillor Waller's very much aware of that, the information was presented to her, was presented to her, and the other members who were members in January of last year, when I showed the, the rising costs and delivery. If I remember correctly, there's about a fifty seven percent deficit in terms of revenue for the M O G. That's, that's point number one. Number two, the M O G would have to agree to this before it came into the local plan. So, it's not a question of us just changing this and saying, oh, well, we can change it, the M O G would have to agree to it as part of our proposal. The big problem for the M O G is the medial costs, which are fairly large, as the councillor knows, as all councillors know. And then finally, probably most important part, because we had changed the, the plan significantly, we would also require probably to do a further sustainability assessment at cost to the council on the whole plan, because the plan has changed, therefore we have to do another sustainability assessment on the whole plan, and that would take time and money for the council. So, it's not a question, a simple question, of saying, let's just do three hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty houses, whatever number we fancy, this is clearly fundamental in an unexplained sound plan.
Yes, councillor Beck, I'll grant you my question.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. I agree with councillor Brown that we should be looking at this as a, as a whole, this is a strategy for Rutland, rather than getting, you know, tickled these arguments on particular sites. I would like to make a point on the Wissendy side, which I'll come back to, but overall, I did, and I did say that, you know, I praised the dedication of councillors and officers in putting this whole plan together, but I followed that with a comment that actually, that was all very well, but we've been very good at the process and actually not really considered the, the strategy, and I by myself, having read all these documents, being presented at this point in time, that the strategy was tied up with two options, I'd have thought we can be, without having had the opportunity previously, to actually debate the spatial strategy, actually really decide what is best for this county, and I'm sorry, but I'm slightly more confused, having heard the, the last comments, that I would thought a pragmatic amendment to this local plan, with a view of getting it through, that the rationale could be forward, that it's less than, less than fifteen years, actually would be a sensible discussion, to get us out of this really feels like a very defensive corner that we've been backed into. And just on the Wissendy side, I would like, I know the reply was given to Mr. Drabl, I'd like an assurance that in terms of protecting our historical landscape, that actually the fact that the, the site is a registered site of historical interest is actually relooked again in, in that particular allocation, I'd like the assurance that that is, that we are confident that that has been properly done. Thank you.
Councillor Brown, yes, okay, you want to respond?
I'm going to take advice from the officers on your second point, because I, I have an answer, but I prefer to make an accurate answer.
Could I ask, that's a, you should, councillor, Mr. Runcin, to join us? I think we've had a microphone here, Mr. Runcin. And of course, please sit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think you're aware that the importance for us in terms of planning this plan is to be sound, and so we've paid a big emphasis in this in terms of making sure we've got robust evidence to support the plan, and the right appraisals have been undertaken of it in terms of sustainability appraisal, habitat evaluation appraisal, and whole plan viability study. So, with respect to the site in Wissendy, I mean, the officers are able to advise on its removal from the plan, and that's for four reasons. One is, the plan is sound, with it is allocated and supported by robust evidence. We have taken account of the archaeological and historical heritage factors in terms of making that assessment of the site, and we have sought advice and views of the county archaeologist in terms of doing that. At the moment, the evidence presented to us does not provide robust evidence to depart from that assessment, and so to include it or change the plan at this stage, it would make it inconsistent with the evidence base we've got. So, if we were to make such a change to the plan, the point I think councillor Brown was trying to say is, we would have to revisit the whole of the site appraisal process, we would have to then carry out a further sustainability appraisal process to justify that, which obviously involves delaying on cost. So, the point is, the common sense is, you know, there's still due process to go through in terms of that site, through examination, and, you know, the county inspector will consider all the evidence submitted at that time, consider the council's site appraisal process, but we consider that to be robust, and with what's the adopted the same approach in terms of the assessment that's been done for St George's and Woodfox, which was out in the appendix to the reports that went to scrutiny in December and to academy in December.
Councillor Powell, do you actually have a sort of supplementary to that?
Just a note, to thank you for that, I didn't actually ask for a full reiteration to previous answer, and I think the debate is bigger than that, but it was just the confidence in that full assessment that I wanted clarification, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to call upon, before you, councillor Beck, I just called upon the monitoring officer for a few words of perhaps legal advice to protect our position going forward. Thank you.
Councillors, if I may, just provide some brief advice in relation to the plan period that is proposed. Councillors are required, under the Planning and Coalescing Plan Act two thousand and four, to have regard to guidance from the Secretary of State when deciding on their plan. So, the plan period that has been outlined to you, that must be a minimum of fifteen years from the, from the period, from the determination, is something that you are required to have regard to in your consideration. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Beck.
Thank you very much indeed, chairman. On the basis of it, I find this a very attractive amendment, but I do have reservations, chairman, about the risks that we, the officer even now has said, but even before that. In the past week, chairman, I was in contact, direct contact with the planning inspectorate, and if I may, I will just read out the advice that I was given, because I think it does give us further opportunities. If the local planning authority wish to make changes to the plan following the Regulation nineteen consultation and before submission, and wish the changes to be considered as part of the submitted plan, they should prepare an addendum to the plan containing the proposed changes. The addendum, together with the sustainability appraisal of the proposed changes, if they are significant, should be published for consultation on the same basis as the regular Regulation nineteen consultation, before the plan is submitted to, for examination. Now, chairman, I think, I agree with other members who've already said, I think we do need to try to come to a resolution tonight, that does give this council, because we in effect are the local planning authority, not the county, but the council, the final say on that. I just, I would make that point, chairman, because I do think, on the surface, the proposed amendment is attractive, I fear that it may not achieve its aim.
Thank you, councillor. I've got councillor Brown, I have, I'm taking councillor Brown, then...
Councillor Waters.
The affair is to councillor Waters, yes, okay, councillor, you're not, you're not making, councillor Waters.
Thank you, chair. I say that the proposed amendment would be very attractive if I thought that, A, it would be held up on inspection, and B, if it was a safe thing to do, I'm not at all sure that it's a safe thing to do, I think it would be more likely to leave us to developers taking turn of action where we would not want them to do so. But importantly, I thought the whole idea was to get infrastructure in place and do things right this time, and the proposal seems to be to put three hundred and fifty houses on a site without putting the infrastructure there first, and that to me just isn't going to go, and I wouldn't be able to support it for that reason.
Thank you, councillor Waters. Now, I think councillor Brown, and that's what referring to someone else. Councillor Brown.
Chairman, unfortunately, of course, we didn't have sight of the proposal from councillor Waller at the end of this evening, and I'm just working and racking my brain to find the reasons why, maybe the issues with it. I think one of them is that three hundred and fifty houses on St George's would not be compliant with paragraph one one seven of the National Planning Policy Framework either, and this says that policies should make as much use as possible of brownfield land. You recall... You recall, I made this comment previously, I think I made it at both scrutiny and I made it at the previous meetings, and I think that's an extreme, so, in, in my view, and I think in the view of the officers, that's another reason why the inspector would not find it sound, that it was not making best use of as much possible use of the brownfield previous to the developer plan at St George's.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Members, as it appears that the meeting will continue beyond nine thirty, we, we require an extension of time to allow the meeting to continue in a quarter to over fifty-eight, I propose that we extend by fifteen minutes, do I have a seconder, please, seconded by my vice chair, councillor Brown, or those available? Unanimous, okay, so that means we will be running until nine thirty-five, thank you, so the, the debate can, can continue. Councillor Powell, thank you.
So it's a very quick question, a clarification from councillor Brown, on the brownfield site, because I'm a new member and I don't know all the answers to everything, I'm just interested why the St George's isn't on our brownfield land register, part one, and why, you probably can't guess me, and also why that hasn't been updated for two years, when I understood it should be updated every year. Thank you.
Councillor Brown.
I can answer the first part, I can answer the second part, I shall defer to the, the officers for the second part. The first part is that at this point in time, as of today, I believe it's not a brownfield site, there will be a brownfield site when the MOD leave it, and therefore at that stage,